Item six is our receipt of petitions from the citizens of Front Royal. I'd like to welcome you here this evening. I know there's a lot of people here this evening, and if you want to speak tonight, we'd like to ask you to come forward to the podium, give your name, address, and address the council. We don't address back to the public, we address the council here this evening myself. Also, we're going to limit it to three minutes. We have about thirty people who want to speak, so I'd like for you to come forward, give your name, address, and then speak for three minutes, and hopefully in about three minutes you'll have what you have to say. I'd appreciate it if you would keep the audience quiet and notice you're speaking. I don't want to see any outbursts or any one raising a problem here this evening, and I'd like to appreciate it, would appreciate it if you were able to hear that here this evening at this meeting. So at this time, we'll begin our public input or input this evening, and we'd like to ask Mr. President to give us our first speaker.
Gary Kushner.
Good evening. I'm Gary Kushner on 1106 Petrie Road in Bentonville. I thought the interim manager was appointed to supervise all the government operations and projects, to shepherd the process to get candidates for a permanent manager and to prepare the 2020 budget, not change personnel of the 1920 budget. It was explained that the findings were not in response to performance issues, but such actions without a well-thought-out plan to address the immediate responsibilities they worked on raises questions and demonstrates a clear margin of failure. This is especially true for tourism, whose most significant period begins only a few months. The interim manager said that he intended to prepare options for a permanent manager to consider, but then actually implemented his ideas instead. Those actions are not consistent with the citizens' desire for more transparency and a greater opportunity to participate in their government. The interim manager has criticized staff and said they are not agile or nimble enough to manage tourism, but offered no definitive evidence to support such a conclusion. I believe many with government experience would attest that tourism is exactly what should not be conducted by an outside disconnected entity. How would you evaluate success of such an outsourcing? Maybe documenting the possible reduction in unused storefronts on Main Street? The public's disenchantment with the interim manager is a reflection of shortcomings in previous areas as well. His efforts to radically change the water policy for non-tan residential development when council was poised to affirm existing policy, the failure to be transparent about his personal relationship with the corrupt Boone West property owner and him being president of an LLC involving real estate development, attempting to fast-track tax fee reductions before a full water study was completed, so he could have a personal opportunity to break a voting tie should one occur, his promotion of an adversarial relationship on EDA issues, rather than pursuing a cooperative approach that would be beneficial to the public's interest, since they are catty citizens as well, failing to urge changing the town code after there was an interpretation that the government was responsible for water connections rather than developers, the debacle of whether we should be paid individually or as the self-employer of an LLC, and promoting a communications plan that restricts media access to inquiries only through his office. Now, I can't imagine that the interim manager's efforts would have council approval or guidance, so this rests suddenly on your plate. While the interim manager's actions may have been well-intended, the public is neither satisfied with his results nor his style. Many think this is all a done deal, but I sincerely hope that's not the case. Council's responsibility is to represent the people rather than to just govern them. It is imperative that their opinions be solicited or integrated. In conclusion, the appropriate action at this point in my opinion would be to objectively analyze the proposed reorganization, limit outsourcing to activities where success can be clearly measured or are specialized, and that the interim manager be directed to only identify potential areas involving significant change to be considered by a permanent manager but not implement them. Such actions would contribute to regain public trust in reducing unnecessary drama in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie McDaniel.
Hello, my name is Marie McDaniel. I live on 1096 Kessler Road in Front Royal. I love this town. I'm a new resident. I've been here just over, oh, yeah, I came from Northern Virginia. The people of Front Royal are so special to me. I haven't opened a door since I came here. When it was cold, someone at the gas station said, "Ma'am, please get back in your car. I'll pump your gas for you." Everybody has made me so welcome, from my clerk at the 7-Eleven stairwell to Christie who drives a bus. Because this town has been so special to me, I wanted to give back, so I decided I'm going to learn more about this town, and I volunteer at the visitor's center. That special place and the people who work there and volunteer are amazing. They all have a passion for promoting Front Royal, even when the threat of unemployment hanging over their heads, starting with militia, Hart already fired, Tim, Gail, Debbie, Nellie, and Megan, they make the center the heart and soul of this town. To the people from all over the country and the world, Mumbai, India last week, they are the face of Front Royal, not your signs pointing to the visitor's center or the Skyline Drive. They want to know, where do we stay? Where do we shop? And how the heck do we get to Skyline Drive? They also ask, why should we relocate to Front Royal rather than Winchester, Strasburg, and Lorale? And we tell them about our wonderful town. The visitor's center is Front Royal's heart and soul. Don't lose it the way we seem to lose dogs, cats, goats, cows, and a lot of dog, over 20 million. Thank you for listening, and I do love this town very, very much.
Thank you.
Joanne Carney.
Hello, my name is Joanne Carney. I live at 364 Summit Point Drive in Front Royal. I am here as a private citizen to speak about the tourism outsourcing plan. I'm also a volunteer at the visitor's center. I was not asked to speak at this meeting. It's come to light that the town tried outsourcing tourism before without success. The department was brought back under the town's management and its scope was expanded. That was a positive direction that should be retained. As of now, remaining staff and operations are in limbo, waiting to find out their fate. But along with the toll on these dedicated public servants, the other potential losses for the town, its businesses, and residents must be considered. If you outsource, you lose control. The town is our product, and our mission at the center is to support the success of every business and attraction. New management may have a different mission. What loyalty will they have to the town or its businesses? How will the town's interests be protected? And what oversight will there be on how your money is being spent? Right now, you have full control of the message and methods. Do you really want to lose that? Mr. Teedrick reportedly said the government is not agile and creative enough to manage tourism, but the department staff have displayed creativity and agility in new outreach and initiatives. They have done and can do more. Tourism is the town's lifeblood. The council should be increasing support for the department, not handing it off to an unknown quantity. Two, you lose expertise. You have a knowledgeable, reliable, professional workforce who each handle a specific operational task. They devote weekdays, weekends, and off-hours to providing visitors with the best possible experience. They regularly go above and beyond in service and have excellent reviews. If the rehire option fails, the town stands to lose all of that talent. Even if they are hired, the job limbo returns every time the contract is rebid. This persistent state of insecurity will eventually lead to high turnover, and you'll be left with low performers. The visitor's center's reputation will suffer, and by extension, the town's. Some say volunteers can do it all. That's unrealistic. Volunteers cannot be expected to carry the same levels of commitment and responsibility as paid staff. Three, you lose ground. Tourism staff have been building bridges between the town and business owners and had just formed a committee to coordinate tourism efforts with the county. Business owners felt they had a guide and ally on the inside to help them navigate town government procedures as they began adventures. We were casting our nets wider, utilizing many means to attract visitors and foster partnerships. Now those connections and plans are either broken or damaged. It's yet another blemish on our reputation that we can't afford. This outsourcing stands to do more harm than good and could cost much more than it hopes to save, as many other municipalities have learned. Why repeat a course of action that has already been found unsuccessful by your predecessors? Consider the long-term ramifications and potential losses. Please reject the outsourcing plan and keep the staff and operations of tourism with the town for the sake of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. President.
Paul Aldrich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two weeks ago, I came before you.
Sir, would you give your name and address, please?
256 Orchard Street in Front Royal. Two weeks ago, I came before you and presented you with two resolutions, one of which you're going to be approaching tonight, the other of which was the militia resolution. The reason that I am here this evening is because of that resolution. I understand it's not under consideration at the moment, but I did want to bring something to your attention. The new Virginia militia is here. The new Virginia militia is active. On February 6th, there was a crisis that happened down in Tazewell County. Major flooding occurred in which people needed help. The new Virginia militia activated Thursday evening. Friday morning, we proceeded with members of this town to collect supplies, water, food, et cetera, to provide to those citizens in Tazewell County. Saturday morning, a crew of twelve gentlemen from this area headed down there and gave That assistance included all kinds of things that people are going to need in that flooded area. They took four-wheel-drive vehicles. They took boats down there. They helped in any way they could while they were down there. They returned back to us Sunday. As I said before with the militia, we're not here to be a bunch of podons out there with guns. We're here to help the community. And the new Virginia militia would also like to propose the opportunity to have a volunteer day. I believe we're looking maybe at the end of April, where we could bring together the fire department, the police department, the 4H Center, many of the other volunteer organizations, and bring the citizens of this town and of this county together to help out. I do ask you to consider that militia resolution again, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Jim Hart.
Jim Hart, living 1120 Ashby Street. Mr. Teedrick reminds me of Jeff Dunham. Jeff Dunham, for those who don't know who Jeff Dunham is, is puppeteer. Guess who his puppets are?
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Guess who his puppets are?
Mr. Hart, would you not use your personality speed, please?
Okay.
Get it on with your seat.
All I'm saying is, Teedrick is controlling what you all said. Everybody knows. I have another observation. In the paper, Teedrick related a priority as to sending the water out to the north side. And what's his motive for that? Is it a new subdivision you all planned out there? And if it is, I hear individuals such as Teedrick and a certain judge have some interest in it.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, speculation.
That's speculation.
Mr. Hart, I want you to continue. I'm sorry for the interruptions, please.
Okay.
Please don't make me stop there. Keep it, Dawson. Don't relate to names, please.
Termination of five employees. Three of those is the engineering, zoning, and planning. What do they have to do with the new subdivision? Another termination is the council clerk. Why is the council clerk terminated? We already have a council clerk to replace him. It could be that the previous town council clerk has not signed a nondisclosure. My fourth item is how is the progress going with the new town manager recruitment? I'd like to find out how far you are along in replacing the town manager. Also, I suggest that you, the council members, forget running for reelection, because I don't think you ever going to get reelected. Now, Mr. Mayor, please don't do your standard communications after all the media. We already know how you all stand. Actions speak louder than words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Hart.
My name is Janice Hart. I reside at 1120 Ashby Street. This whole fiasco of the last week has been very cleverly disguised. Last week's bloodletting is just a smokescreen for the big picture. The plans that Mr. Teedrick and this council, except for the mayor, passed. It is about the water on the north end, on the parcel behind Target. Without water, it cannot be developed. But even more importantly than that, this is about a subject near and dear to our town manager, consolidation of the town and Warren County. The proposed firing, or the actual firing, of five department heads, our clerk of council, and four part-time positions whose salaries were budgeted until June 30th of this year. How much money is that saving? Why slash these positions? Why wasn't a study presented on the cost savings prior to cutting these positions? Why not show us, the taxpayer voters, the great deal it would be? How much will it cost to find a reliable firm to handle tourism for us? What firm can handle our planning and zoning work? Or does council just want to hand that off to the county? Does the council feel the town no longer needs an engineer? Should we give that to the county as well? Will our police department be the next department on the hit list? Meanwhile, who pays off an $8 million police department, brand new? I doubt the county is willing to absorb our debt. Will that come from what Mr. Teedrick likes to call the slush fund, even though there isn't one, and he should know so? Why has this council not looked for a permanent town manager? Because they want to keep Mr. Teedrick despite all his denials to finish the job, consolidation. In 2010, Mr. Teedrick was head of the Blue City Committee. I have a copy of the PowerPoint and the results and the recommendations of this committee. In short, it is a primer in consolidation. If your younger council members haven't read it, I recommend that you do. It's an interesting read on an attractive background. Taxpayers remember, as many taxpayers remember, it was a very heated and emotional issue. Fast forward ten years, and here we are again. This is where we're headed, as interim town manager and council, with the exception of Mayor Teawalt, are leading this town down this path yet again. Each one of you stands to gain from this in one way or another. Four votes is all that's needed. Let's let the county take us over and get the water done and be done with it? I, for one, would never vote for that. The expression about putting lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. I rest my case.
Bonnie Gabbard.
Mr. Mayor, may I call a point of order on speakers? Specifically, and I'm happy to read it out loud, but comments being addressed to council, I'd like to call a point of order that I believe that some of the language that's being used is violating proper rules of decorum.
Agreed.
As stated in Robber Rules, where Section 4-43, uh, 4 and 43 violate the Town Code 4-8-412, specifically, I'm paraphrasing, Section 4. Speakers must address their remarks to the chair, maintain courteous tone, and should avoid injecting a personal note. They must never attack or make any allusions as to the motives of the members. Section 43 of Robber Rules, members must avoid personalities, and under no circumstance can they attack, question the motives, and, you know, paraphrasing, at the moment of the chair, here's the words, fraud, liar, lie, must act immediately to call for point of order. Agreed? So I didn't interrupt Ms. Hart, but that is the Robber Rules of decorum, so just wanted to make that known.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Bonnie Gabbard, 1221 Valley Drive. I don't have a lot to say tonight. I think everybody else here is pretty much saying what I would say in a different way. But I did put in a FOIA request for some information, and I put it in last Monday, and I think I'm supposed to have the information back within five business days, which would have been at the end of today. I have not gotten anything back on that FOIA request, so would like for you all to please check into that for me and find out what's going on and why I have not gotten my FOIA back at the time that I was allotted and should have gotten it back. This just kind of makes me feel like it's just another, another way that services are going down since people have been fired. I was shocked to see that the people were fired. They were good employees of 20 years. I know that town citizens can't and should not be the ones to fire people or hire people because we don't know the inner workings of everything. However, we do know that when you have staff that have been here as long as the ones that have been here that you all got rid of, that's a lot of experience, and they wouldn't have been here that long had they not been good employees to begin with. So to me, when you're going to let good employees go, something is really wrong, and the citizens of the town are very upset by this. We had a lot of trust in you all. That's why we voted for you all again, because we did trust you. But I think that that trust is no longer there.
Thank you. Mr. President, please.
Paul Gabbard.
Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to call on Mr. Meza and Mr. Holloway of last week for their unprofessionalism, disrespect, and ugliness.
Mr. Gabbard, please go. Name your name, please.
Okay. I would like to bring to your attention two council persons from last week who were unprofessional, disrespectful, and ugly to the council. And I would like to tell the rest of the council that they were the same way for not coming to the defense of the mayor. They just let what happened, happen. It was ugly, ugly, ugly. On February 4th, our town manager told county officials he did not believe the town government was agile enough to properly handle tourism promotion and marketing for the town. All of a sudden, out of nowhere, they're not agile. He wants the Chamber of Commerce to take over. That's one of his ideas. Chamber of Commerce had it several years ago, ruined it, couldn't do it. They misfunneled money to other directions. They didn't use the money that was supposed to be for the town tourism. In other words, they were cringey. And yet, Mr. Teedrick wants to outsource it to a board member, and I wonder if he was a board member at the time this money was funneled. Our town manager stated as the new interim town manager, he wanted to set the table for the new town manager to be allowed the choice to implement or not implement significant changes in the town government. Looks like to me those changes are already taking place. Our town manager also said after this year's current fiscal budget, fiscal budget that carries the new town tourism department and visitor's center staff through June 30th, decisions will be made by the entity or entities contracted to take over those functions from town staff. Section employee retention for the part-time including the current tourism director. Why are you letting Mr. Teedrick do all that right now? Our town manager said by cutting staff, the town will save $234,000, but he wants to increase, uh, wait just a second. He wants to do increases that will take $24,000 to $46,000 to bladed structures. Why are we, as citizens, paying to do, tear down somebody else's house? And this will be done, he will put this as a lien, a lien on these houses that we are going to front the money on. The lien may never be paid off for 50 years. Why should we have the brunt of paying all this money and never receiving the money back? $4,000 increase to downtown events for gazebo night. $4,000 for gazebo night to get the firing people who need a job. Our town manager said some employees were let go for the good of their budget. He also said they were let go due to poor performance. How could you praise people one month and let them go the next month? Shake your head there, Mr. Manager. I like how you laughed at me and my sign.
Excuse me.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gabbard, your time is pretty much out. Can you close it, please?
I'll close it. In December of 2008, Mr. Teedrick stood before the town council and said town business is conducted poorly, illegally, and belligerently. Things never seem to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Allen, 15 Massey Street. I will send you all the questions about the budget that I would love to hear answers for tomorrow through Tina, all right? In the meantime, I have some comments and some questions. I'll just say them. In the state of Virginia, travel is worth $25.8 billion, and that translates to $151,300,000 being spent in Front Royal Arts for our county, and that gives us, or the county, $2,920,000 in tax revenue. So it's big business, and it is disappointing to have the Tourism and Community Development Office go. And I question whether or not you are actually saving money, because when you think of it, you are losing out on opportunities for economic development. There are many people who went to her office with ideas for businesses, and she would do a lot of guidance and go through the incentives and so on and so forth with them, which is very interesting and quite passionate in developing the county as well as the town. And we are cooperating with Kemp. Have you heard of the town? Heard of Kemp? I don't think that when there's an absence of person in that office, in that main office, that you can say you're saving money. So please, would you consider looking at that and come up with an answer for it? We were poised through that office to really take off. We had done so many things. I say we because I'm a volunteer in the CD-BG grant, which Hart and Kemp got for us, and it's worth $700,000, and they're not here to manage it. I wonder how long it will take us to get back up to speed. If you have strangers doing this, or you outsource it, I believe it will take you about a year. If you have strangers doing this, or you outsource it, I believe it will take you about a year to get to speed. And I don't think that we can afford to wait that long for it. Okay, so questions. One, as I look at the budget, I'm not sure I see a horticulture position in Newfield. Okay? And then I see in several other accounts, like water administration, sewer administration, wastewater, and water maintenance and sewer, that the salaries have been cut. And I'm wondering how you do that? And what would be the effect on the leaders of these organizations or businesses that we do? And our general revenue fund, we, I see that we borrowed three million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, okay, for the projects in infrastructure. But my question is, how much of the available funds in, let's say, the electric account did, does this borrow? I would be very concerned if it had been leveraged up to the maximum, okay? And so I would like to know what percent of the available funds have been used. And I don't want it leveraged up to the max because obviously we have emergencies, which we always do, then we would not be able to address those issues. Okay? So that would be another question I want. That's tremendous. You'll get your questions tomorrow, okay? Thanks.
Mr. President, please.
Craig Anderson.
Good evening. Craig Anderson, one ten Sunset Main. And you see my sticker, so you know what I'm all about. When I got that sticker on, I am professional and proud and, and just to be a stand-up citizen. We really proved that when we went down to Richmond, and we won over the hearts of all the law enforcement down there. We were put in a cage and head snipers put down on us, and we were called dirty names, and we disfrothed that, we blowed that out of the water. Please support Sanctuary, make us a Sanctuary Town. And I have my own ideas on militia. I'm working with another group that, authorized militia can be tailored to whatever we want. Personally, I'd like to pick up trash and share a few about it while, while we had firearms on us. And just because we're so demonized, that would be my first personal goal, is to no longer demonize the gun owner. Because when people have, honest citizens have guns, you're much safer. So try and keep it short and, and please confirm us a Sanctuary Town if you would, please. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Stephen Schlossinger.
Stephen Schlossinger, four oh nine East Main Street. This great thing, we're all written out. Mr. Meza, you have a ruling for me. We're tired, okay? I want to say some things, I want to say some words, some not-so-kind, some not-so-nice, okay? We're refraining from using anyone's name, so we're gonna call him Mr. T. Mr. T, you are obviously a very narrow-minded individual and wanting to hand over all the tourism to a private company.
Sir. No, 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 we're not gonna have that.
All right, we'll slack that.
I wish I could say that I don't want it under that tone, boys. No, or do I want it addressed to Mr. T, please?
I would address it to Mr. T, to Mr. T.
Just try to open it.
All right, let's try it again. I want to just go through the bullet points here. If you, might as well just send out the tourism to India, because that's pretty much what you're gonna do when you're outsource it. I've lived on Main Street for a while now. It's, what they've done on Main Street is fantastic. What they've done with tourism is fantastic. I don't know if you guys have seen it. I know you guys walk Main Street on, you know, pretty much on a daily basis. I've seen many of you guys down on Main Street. You guys have done a wonderful job. I think we need to keep tourism in the house, without a doubt. And, you know, may not be the right person that was there before, but I'm sure we can find the right person to be there now. So that's my point. So, you know, for as far as the town council, I thank you for letting me talk. And don't take any of the good examples. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Skip Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Skip Rogers, thirty Blue Ridge Avenue. I'm also a business owner. I've, I've been a business owner for forty years, and the last eleven years on Chester Street. I just have a couple of short comments. I attended last week an ad hoc meeting that was called very quickly and to a lot of folks' surprise that a temporary employee of the town somehow had the authority to allow four senior members of our town to be removed. Now, I'm a businessman, and I've hired and I've fired. I've had temporary workers in senior positions, but I can't understand how anyone in a temporary position, no matter how long they've been around, no matter what office or position they held, but as a temporary employee to be given the authority to dismiss senior personnel, to me is just outrageous. That was my first point. My second point has to do with a meeting that I attended last week as well. There was an open planning meeting, and I appreciate the comment earlier cited in Robert's Rules, and specifically a term that was used in that reading that had to do with liar. At that planning meeting, there happened to be quite a few folks in attendance. And also, if you may have noted, those of us who were there, there were quite a number of children. And to hear the language that was used directed at this town's leader, to me is shameful. It was aggressive. It was assaulted. And those individuals who have been noted should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you for this opportunity.
Mr. President, please.
Ken Dameron.
My name is Dameron Kenneth. I live at seven one five Stockton Road in Front Royal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I was looking at the proposed budget for the coming year, and Mr. Tederick was kind enough to provide me with a copy of it. And I sympathize with him and BJ putting that thing together. I've done a few of them myself. It ain't no fun. His problem was doubled, though, because he's also being asked to make management decisions. And he's made them into his best judgment. It's up to the council to either approve or disapprove. Just like today, President Trump released his proposed budget for the coming year, although saying, sure, throw it in the trash, dead on arrival. They'll write their own. And that's what you guys gotta do. You gotta make the judgment over whether his, his proposal is good or not. Now, one, one big thing that I really object to, approximately half a million dollars as a debt service on what promises to be at least an eleven million dollar project run under redundant water and sewer line after the North Carter. I've been trying to find out for six months whether we're legally required to do that. Neither Mr. Mayfair, the mayor, or Mr. Tederick could tell me. Nobody knows. So I think that means we're not required to do it. If the mayor wants an extra water line, let him pay for it. We don't need to pay them. Anyhow, I would appreciate the council considering that and eliminate that item from the budget. That'll save half a million dollars for thirty years. Thirty years. That's fifteen million bucks. That's larger than any other project any of you have ever done, including Leech Line Parkway. Because we only paid about thirty-four percent of the fifty percent or seventeen percent. Any of you, give some consideration just eliminating that. I don't know what you're gonna do with a half million dollars. You disperse it among yourself. Thank you.
Mr. President, please.
Chris Ramsey.
I'm Chris Ramsey. I live at four hundred Fulton Lane here in Front Royal. Mr. Mayor, Mayor's Council. I spoke a few weeks ago about an inequity that's come to light in the Water and Sewer Department with respect to town policy and water and sewer tax fees, access fees. Under the current policy, I'm required to pay a substantial higher fee for my water and sewer tasks than others in this town, as well as those who I represent. I don't know if you've gotten, you've forgotten about my presentation or you've chosen to ignore it. But I would like a written response to how you justify your position on the new policy that's been instituted. Not only that, I have zombie permit that's ready to pick up at the town office tomorrow. How will I be treated when I go pay my fees? And I have, and as I asked previously, I'm being redundant. Can this be substantiated? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Patricia Felmetscher.
Patricia Felmetscher, six three six Union Orange Drive, Melaton two two six four five. Demontre says you're the message, isn't it? I have just a couple of numbers that relate to tourism that I think you'll find very interesting. I got these numbers from the website for Virginia Tourism. The occupancy tax collected in two thousand and nineteen in Warren County was three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one seventy-one. The meals tax was one million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty. Now, I don't know yet where that tourism money is going, what the county is using it for, what the town is using it for, but I will. There were twenty-eight thousand visitors coming to the visitor center last year. That's a lot of people that are being directed to hotels, tourist sites, restaurants. But not only that, they are welcomed. As the lady previously said, the visitor center really is the heart and soul of this town. I have two questions. The other interesting fact is, according to the Shenandoah Valley Tourism Partnership, Front Royal is among the ten most visited towns in the valley. That's something to protect. I do not understand why a trolley that costs nearly forty thousand dollars a year that serves the citizens of Front Royal and Warren County becomes a tourism issue. I also don't understand why blighted buildings becomes a tourism issue. That is something that affects all of us every day. I, I just, I don't get it. So when I get some more numbers about how this money gets divided up, I'll see you again.
Mr. President.
Susan Shearhart.
Good evening. My name is Susan Shearhart. Number is I at three two seven Scotton Place here in Front Royal. I co-chair the Front Royal Warren County Appalachian Trail Community Committee. Our town and county were jointly designated an official AT community by the Appalachian Trail Conservancy in two thousand and twelve. Our committee of volunteers raises awareness of and support for trail-friendly local business, local land use policies that promote the trail and its views, and hiking as a healthy outdoor activity. The AT community designation has directly resulted in five new businesses, including three on Main Street, all of which are running. At this time, we are proud to partner with twenty-two local businesses and organizations who have sought and earned AT community supporter certification. Last week, we learned that prior to any public hearing, the FY twenty-one proposed budget included firing key personnel in the town government and noticed that tourism would be privatized. Our group immediately expressed our concerns in a letter delivered to the mayor and each town council member. That letter was also published as a letter to the editor in the Royal Examiner. Not only did tourism attract one hundred and fifty-one million dollars in visitor expenditures to Warren County two thousand and eighteen, a four point nine percent increase over two thousand and seventeen, but according to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, it supported over seventeen hundred jobs, a combined payroll of twenty-three million, and contributed three million to local tax coffers. Some more numbers. The average through hike along the Appalachian Trail will spend fifty-five hundred dollars during the course of their hike, and another four thousand on gear. According to a two thousand and ten survey, they'll spend an average of one hundred and fifty-three dollars per town visit, a figure that has no doubt increased over the last ten years. Last week, based on two hundred and ten reviews, our visitor center was ranked second only to Skyline Caverns as top attractions in Front Royal. Do you know how unusual that is for a visitor center to be deemed an attraction? And we're about to fire that entire staff and change a recipe that has been steadily generating increased revenue for each of the past five years. We were also puzzled to learn that the tourism budget for marketing and advertising has been frozen. This is money already allocated to the current fiscal year and critical to generating business for one hundred and seventy tourism-dependent businesses in the county who count on the visitor center and its marketing materials and services to generate income. Eighty-five percent of Front Royal's tourism budget is covered by lodging fees all collected from visitors to our area, with the remaining fifteen percent coming from Front Royal promotional merchandise sold at the visitor center. None of our tourism department salaries or expenses come out of our own taxpayer dollars. Why are we cutting the tourism budget just as the tourism season is about to begin? Along the Appalachian Trail are more than forty designated communities. Our community is considered a model, supporting twenty-two AT community business sponsors. We are, we do have the leading number. All locally owned businesses that enrich our local economy. Due to the joint effort between tourism, community development, the visitor center, and business members over the past few years, our town now enjoys a strong reputation as a welcoming and helpful town to hikers and tourists, making us one of the friendliest trail towns. So why all this effort to engage the outdoor industry? Because it's a three hundred and sixty-two billion dollar industry driven largely by hiking, camping, and rock climbing, all of which can be found in abundance here in Front Royal. Nationally revenue-revended by the outdoor industry exceeds even oil and gas. So to mix metaphors, Front Royal should be riding that wave, not starting to bolt the loose. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President.
Sonia Cardboard.
I read your mind.
I wish Susan could read mine, because she's such a fast reader. Sonia Cardboard, two-time Westphal Street from Royal. Last week's budget presentation featured a classic sales tactic. Present two nasty-looking extremes and then your own choice in the middle, which creates a false sense of urgency and the perception of no other alternatives. In fact, the very scary projected tax increase to local businesses is pure fiction. State code places a cap on many types of taxes, and our restaurants and real estate businesses and retail businesses are already at that limit. Citizens of Front Royal top the organizational chart in the PowerPoint. Yet we, the citizens, have had no input into how our elected officials have dramatically restructured our government in secret and allocated our hard-earned tax dollars without our consent. Furthermore, it is highly unorthodox to make such dramatic changes with a temporary manager in place, especially one who has humbly confessed his lack of experience in municipal management. I fear that your decisions open the town to lawsuits from several quarters. In addition, coupled with our plummeting county reputation, mismanagement has legal, economic, and ethical repercussions that will make replacement of a temporary town manager difficult, to say nothing of attracting new businesses to the region. At President Page County- At present, Page County is moving toward removal of its tourism from chamber management. I've given you two pages of their research as handouts, which only confirm Warren County's conclusion from many years ago that chambers are not the home for tourism. And I think you need to ask us, the taxpayers and businesses who depend on tourism, whether we think a contractor is a good idea. Also, Mayor Tuwal's decision to speak up in Monday's work session compiled with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, which allows discussion of personnel but not reorganization of town government in closed session. Thus forbidden topics would include privatization of the visitor's center. Of the twenty-nine million allocated to capital projects, approximately two-thirds is revenue generated by enterprise funds for water, sewer, and electricity, which are self-supporting. Again, a presentation that created false sense of urgency and lack of alternatives. The remainder, largely salaries, comes from the general fund, so why were all these positions eliminated? Or is the tourism dust-up meant to distract us from the main event, elimination of planning and zoning department, which would mainly benefit builders and developers? A designated zoning official and a board of appeal are legal obligations. In fact, eliminating staff positions may have nullified our zoning code. Was that the intent? If so, I think we, the citizens, have a right to know. In contrast to our business-friendly rhetoric, any business seeking permits is out of luck right now and could not be blamed for looking elsewhere. Perhaps the part-time landscape architect is meant to become a zoning official? A municipal landscape architect is a great idea, but most of their time is spent reviewing and approving plans for development, not decorating surroundings for tourists. Right now, no one on staff can approve those plans. I'm also concerned about this half-cent tax cut. What is our obligation for the duration of the bond debt? Has feasibility and forecasting been conducted with Davenport, your fiscal oversight contractor? Has water and sewer submitted its review? That needs to be done before you vote on our budget. A tax cut now may mean less larger increases in the near future. I'm no budget expert, but if even an amateur can pick up these red flags, well, better go back to the drawing board. I want to see people on my council that I can trust. And I don't recall anyone running on a right sizing, let's destroy our local government platform. Thank you for your...
Mr. President.
Hi, Kelly Hart, twelve West Fifteenth Street. Thank you, Mayor Tuwal, and hello, everyone on the council. Actually, everything that's been said, that I was going to say, has already been said, so I won't spend too much time. I do think that everyone's presentation has been wonderful. They're asking some great questions, and I sincerely hope that each and every one of you are giving them the attention they deserve. These are our citizens. This is our town. So, give them attention, Chris, Jacob, Natasha, everyone here, and answer these questions. And one suggestion I have, I know the press is here, could there be a compilation of all of our very good questions and some thoughtful answers written out and published somewhere? So, I'm requesting that from the press, and I really look forward to hearing these answers. And I really hope you guys get us on the right path, because all these statements are right. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women. My name is Gary Green. I'm the owner of Mountain Trails at one-twenty East Main Street. I've invested a few hundred thousand dollars in the community in the past three years and created seven jobs. Prior to coming to Front Royal, as a child, my father used to bring us here pretty much every summer, where we'd get on the Skyline Drive, head south towards the city of Orlando, off way to Blue Ridge Parkway. Prior to coming here, I spent twenty years managing morale, welfare, and recreation programs for the U.S. Air Force in Alaska, California, Florida, and Illinois. When the sale of mountain trails was completed back in 2015, I was on the internet in Illinois looking at the obvious expansion from mountain trails in Winchester that was Front Royal due to the fantastic proximity of your natural assets for outdoor recreation and expansion and growth. And it is my considered opinion that in the past three years, I had experienced nothing but growth on Main Street, and I've seen this firsthand, I've spoken with people from all over the globe, from France, Italy, Germany, China, and they all came because they were coming to Front Royal or to the Shenandoah Park. That has been reflected in my bottom line, my ledger, with the seventeen percent growth from last year, which I assure you in retail is very positive numbers, because it simply doesn't happen in this day and time with Ripley Morder, as opposed to the internet. But those numbers are wonderful. And I exchanged it firsthand by running into those people that were coming to the town. So, I sort of cautioned any quick move by an interim position or otherwise that would change something that is already working. If it isn't broken, we probably shouldn't fix it, so to speak. My second point is that I am an appointed member of the Front Royal Warren County Tourism Advisory Board, and appointed by previous versions of this very council. And I was appointed until, I believe, 2022, if I'm not mistaken. But I have a copy here of the memorandum agreement between ourselves, the committee, and this board and Warren County. There's no clause in this memorandum agreement that was drafted by you guys that advises, if we were an advisory board, that pretty much stipulates that the growth of tourism, where tourism was heading in the future, should have been run by that council, at least for input, since we'd already spent close to thirty thousand dollars for random wayfinding signs, gateway signs, for TV commercial spots that have already been produced, up to thirty thousand dollars. So, all of that just seems to be for nothing. It's my full intention to found an outdoor, three-day outdoor recreation-themed festival here in Front Royal that will not require street closure, I promise you. But I'm concerned that those concepts and others might even be squelched or suffocated by any outsourcing that doesn't understand who we are, what we have available to us here, and that's really my concern. My primary point here is that if we were designated as an advisory board regarding tourism for Front Royal and Warren County, we were not consulted in any way.
Bruce Rappaport, three hundred and fifty Main Street, Front Royal. Well, to start off, before I was read the Roberts Rules tonight, I had some other things that I wanted to say, and then I looked up and I said, "In censorship, we trust." So, I'll be good. Frankly, I can't add a whole lot more than what some of these folks have been saying about the firings, and I don't agree with the direction that the town has taken, but we all have our own opinions. It seems to me that there was talk about bringing in an assistant town manager. Many towns have what they call an assistant town manager, but they sort of streamline it with the planning director as an assistant town manager as well. You had a guy here that had twenty years of experience, and haven't been able to get past, why was let go? But anyway, your thoughts of going to outsourcing, I have a manufacturing background, and I have found over the years, about thirty years of experience, that vertical integration, you have a lot of control. When you go horizontal, you're really at the mercy of your suppliers and your contractors, and you never know what you're gonna get, sort of like a box of choppers. You folks are moonlighters. I mean, you get paid a little bit of money, but you all have day jobs. You're not a public admin. I mean, you don't have expertise in public administration. If you did, you'd have urban planning degrees, and you'd have an MBA and a lot of additional education. I know one individual has an MBA, but as far as your interim town manager goes, he does have some supervisory experience about twenty years ago. So, look, I gamble occasionally. In fact, I've been known to play the horses at times, okay? But I don't like to gamble with taxpayers' money. Privatizing your local government operations is a gamble and is really a panacea. We've all heard your arguments for privatizing. Now, here are some arguments not to do. It's a great opportunity for fraud and corruption to occur. Higher cost for consumers is imminent. Inflexibility due to long-term contracts. Profit rather than residents' needs is the primary motivator of the contractor. They're in the make of life.
Bruce, can you finish it short?
We're gonna finish it off, okay? Yeah, just let me get four more talks, okay? Breathe. More dollars required for oversight of your contractors. That means more staff needed for oversight. Less control over the quality of service, no one-to-one contact with the public. Paying for staff for oversight and for companies to make a profit will lead to paying more for the same service. Contractors have an incentive to spend the lease to provide services, which is in conflict with the town needs. That's all I got.
Mr. President.
Fern Vasquez. Hello, good evening. I'm Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I'm Fern Vasquez. I live at one-twenty Baxter Road. I've been preceded by, I think, some impressive speakers who pointed out some facts and figures for your consideration. I don't intend to waste your time by reiterating any of them, but I will say, I want to say two things. One is that I've been very disturbed by this privatization plan. So, I decided a little homework for myself would be to call some other small cities in the state of Virginia whose primary, you know, where tourism played a very strong role. And I contacted Loray, Williamsburg, Winchester, Bristol, and Eddington, and asked them how did they manage their tourism team, and if any of them outsourced. Of those cities mentioned, only one city outsourced, and that was Bristol, Virginia, along with their sister city, Bristol, Tennessee. And they did not give me a very resounding endorsement of how that was working out. In fact, they said it was going to be for review in council as to whether they continue. So, I would ask you to consider that. There's another, a second point that I would like to bring in the budget. I did spend a lot of time reviewing the budget, and there's one section of the budget that gave me pause. And if I have misconstrued or misunderstood in any way, I hope that you get back to it, and maybe you can help me understand it. And that is on page twenty, line item forty-one zero zero one. And it has to do with the salaries in the office of the town manager. I know that currently, under contract, and this is public information, I'm not revealing any confidentiality here, our current interim town manager earns one hundred and fifty thousand annually. But I noticed on page twenty, again, line item forty-one zero zero one, where it says town manager salary, it reads one hundred and ninety-five thousand for fiscal year 2021, okay? And that's a rather healthy twenty-three percent increase in pay. Additionally to that, he has requested an assistant town manager, and totaled with benefits, the bottom-line salaries of a town manager office totals three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and five. So, I want to put this in a little bit of context. So, I did a little research with some employment websites, and I asked the question, what's the average salary in Virginia for town managers? And the answer came up, ninety-six thousand dollars as the average. There is a high end of about one hundred and twenty-five thousand and a lower end, and you can imagine, these are for cities that have much lower populations. So, and here's another fact to put in context. For a family of four in Front Royal, the median income is forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's about twelve thousand, three hundred, lower than the national average. What does that tell you? So, what that tells me is that we don't come from a town with a lot of resources, that we don't have a strong capacity. So, just one more statement to finalize this. Budgets are far from ideal. They're the opposite of ideal. They are statements of how to prioritize needs using a finite amount of resources. This takes knowledge, wisdom, and just plain old common horse sense. I don't see that reflected in some parts of this budget, because I feel that something is not quite right.
Mr. President.
Melanie Salons, ninety-five, Union Ridge Drive. How things are done matters. If a chef were to serve your favorite meal on a garbage can lid instead of a plate, it would not be an appealing meal. Tact matters. Presentation matters, and timing matters. Guiding the town staff also guided the citizens' trust. Ultimately, it is the council who is elected to be in charge of the ship. An independently contracted interim town manager is the equivalent of a house sitter who has now decided on his own accord to start knocking down walls and renovating the entire house. Chaos has been created because of the manner in which he executed and presented this budget proposal. The citizens look to you, the council, to take the reins and restore the home. Mr. Teeger said at the budget meeting last Monday that there were only three options. He stated this as if it was an absolute fact, but there are other options. There are always other options. He said it would be an inhumane thing to do to fire employees, it would be a humane thing to do to fire the employees in advance so that they wouldn't have to learn of their misfortune at a public meeting. I'm trying here, guys. So, instead, they were blindsided privately by their termination, and the public was left not only blindsided by the firings, but also left to worry and wonder. Thank you. I would appreciate that. Closer to it? Okay. All right, thank you. So, instead, they were blindsided privately by their termination, and the public was left not only blindsided by the firings, but also left to worry and wonder for several days about what was going on before even the slightest explanation was given. It created chaos in a town already torn apart by scandals. The citizens were unaware of the serious issues facing our budget. Why were we unaware? Because on October twenty-first, 2019, at the time he had proposed lowering tax fees, Mr. Teeger said the town was not having budget issues and that there was a surplus of money just sitting idle. He said we needed to drain the slush fund. So, yes, we are now taken by shock to see the budget reflect a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree change in facts being presented. The presentation of this budget could have gone much more smoothly simply by being upfront and honest with the public in a timely fashion. Give us a heads up in advance that while you had previously stated there was extra money, there is in fact not enough money. Ask for the citizens' input as to how we would prefer to see our tax dollars Pregunte la entrada de los ciudadanos sobre cómo preferiríamos ver nuestros impuestos. ¿Queremos un decreto de impuestos? ¿Preferiremos una combinación de incremento de impuestos y algunos cortes de trabajo? Pregunte si alguien más tenía ideas visibles de lugares para balancear el presupuesto porque definitivamente hay algunos. Hablaremos de algunos. Soy un conservador fiscal. Creo en el gobierno pequeño y en el gasto responsable. Pero no terminas nueve posiciones y en el próximo respiro pide agregar una posición de seis personas para un administrador de la ciudad auxiliar. Si es una buena idea agregar la posición o no, se vuelve completamente irrelevante porque el momento de impuestos era incorrecto. Nuestra comunidad ha sido dejada en total desaparecida durante dos años ahora. Tenemos tres nuevos supervisores maravillosos y finalmente tenemos un nuevo vicepresidente en marcha. La comunidad quiere enfocarse en la curación, pero ahora esto sucede.
¿Se le ha ido?
Algo. Este caos constante es como siempre escoger la grieta y nunca permitir que se curara. No puedes perder la confianza del público si constantemente los pones en una frenesí de caos y teatro político. Las acciones del señor Teager no solo han dañado la confianza en él, sino también la confianza en el consejo para asegurar que los chequeos y balances adecuados finalmente se ponen en marcha. Consejo, le pido a ustedes, que se den cuenta y hagan lo correcto. Gracias.
Presidente.
Amber Morris. Buenas noches. Primero, me gustaría reconocer y reconocer los esfuerzos llevados a cabo por nuestro actual consejo en lo que respecta a la mejora y mejora futura de nuestro pueblo. Durante años he acercado este stand, varias veces para comendar el trabajo que el consejo ha hecho, pero más a menudo que no, ha sido ofrecer mi consejo, dar feedback y pedirles no aumentar nuestros impuestos. Déjame leer a ustedes antes de hablar una definición que todos los que están en la audiencia son privados de encontrar por sí mismos. La definición que leeré a ustedes es administrador. Es un pronombre y número uno, es una persona responsable de controlar o administrar todas o parte de una empresa o una organización similar. Dos, una persona que controla las actividades, los negocios y otros aspectos de la carrera de un entretener, atleta, grupo de artistas, negocios, etc. Mucha de las personas que están en la audiencia esta noche se quedaron atrás de mi el año pasado solo en el año pasado, y ya no hay impuestos más altos. El escándalo de los impuestos es la razón de esto. ¿Por qué están aumentando nuestros impuestos? ¿Están nos castigando?, etc., etc. Hay una diferencia entre ser fuerte y ser productivo. Es mi elección productividad. Además, desearía que aquellos que han venido a crucificar al consejo en lugar de trabajar con ustedes se dieran cuenta y consideren acercarse al stand con humildad. Algunos necesitan humildad para ver que puede haber una mejor forma de hacer el trabajo en lugar de hablar de ello. Me agradece el despeje del presupuesto y cualquier gasto vigoroso que se termine antes de considerar aumentar nuestros impuestos como fue el año pasado. Algunos podrían cuestionar el gasto que estoy hablando, no es sobre los empleados, pero el administrador de la ciudad retiró una tarifa de límite de $35,000 del presupuesto propuesto que estaba incluido para cobrar coches eléctricos en la ciudad. Que cobraba durante la temporada de pico, podría decirme, cinco a seis coches al mes, uno en las temporadas de descanso. Así que gracias por retirar límites como éstos. Así que mientras algunos pueden estar de acuerdo con otras apropiaciones del presupuesto, hay bueno que se hace. Dejar a los empleados irse nunca es fácil y casi nunca personal. Es y fue una decisión de negocio. Y un administrador de la ciudad auxiliar en el presupuesto propuesto es más necesario. Y solo puedo decir que desearía que hubiéramos tenido eso en marcha antes y desearía que hubiéramos tenido un consejo funcional que pudiera llegar a un consenso y trabajar con el anterior administrador y el vicepresidente para encontrar los fondos para eso. Porque si eso hubiera sucedido, no estaríamos en el predicado que estamos hoy donde tenemos un administrador de la ciudad interminable, hubiéramos tenido un administrador de la ciudad auxiliar que podría haberse mudado a ese rol. Lo siento a todos ustedes en el consejo y al administrador de la ciudad que los electos esperaban que no trabajaran y estuvieran en silencio cuando se trataba del presupuesto y del futuro estado económico de nuestro pueblo. Continúa siendo reiterado que el señor Teager es solo el interminable. Disculpen mi ignorancia, pero no importa la larga espera de un empleo esperado y he trabajado para algunas de las mayores corporaciones financieras en el país. No creo que alguien sería feliz o apreciar a un empleado que no estaba haciendo ningún trabajo y solo estaba sentado agarrando sus dedos esperando que su sustitución venga en los próximos seis meses. Es mi comprensión de hablar individualmente y directamente con todos ustedes, no por escucha o en los medios o en las cartas al editor, que han estado trabajando colectivamente como consejo incluso antes del señor Teager como administrador de la ciudad para hacer el trabajo y avanzar. Simplemente estaban esperando y buscando liderazgo y conocimiento financiero del vicepresidente y el siguiente administrador, cualquiera que fuera, antes de que se anunciara que sería el señor Teager. Además, si me permite, señor Teager, nunca he oído que usted dijera personalmente que la Comisión de Comercio era quien usted planeaba o propuso que fuera a desplegar el turismo. ¿Es eso correcto? Eso es, nuevamente, escucha. Simplemente fue el término outsourcing y saltaron a conclusiones de lo que ha pasado en el pasado.
¿Qué quieres decir? Es un punto muy difícil.
Matt, es mi disculpas que parece que has convertido a Front Royal. Has venido a hacer un trabajo que te fueron ordenado, que te fueron asignado. Te fueron ordenado limpiar algo, has trabajado a la discreción del consejo y hay teoría de conspiración después de teoría de conspiración y acusaciones y ataques personales que te están lanzando cada día, no importa lo que hayas hecho desde que has entrado en tu posición. Y a pesar de ser muy receptiva a responder comentarios públicos cada vez que te preguntan o confrontas, y lo has hecho con humildad. Gracias consejo por ser fiscalmente conservador y trabajar como el gobierno debe, el administrador de la ciudad interminable a la discreción de los miembros electos del pueblo. También esta noche veréis mi estaca de Gunther.
Gracias, es muy bueno.
Así que estoy esperando a que el pueblo de Front Royal se convierta en el santuario de la segunda amendment.
Presidente, ¿quién tiene más?
El señor alcalde, la última oradora de esta noche es Scott Jenkins.
Scott Jenkins, 3471, Virginia County. Voy a ser breve, siendo la última, no intentaré hacerte too long. Solo dos, he enviado un par de cartas al consejo y al alcalde. No rehasharé el contenido de esas, confío que ustedes tienen tiempo para leerlas y sufrir mi pensamiento. Dos puntos más que quiero hacer. Durante el tiempo que hemos estado discutiendo privatización y reducción del financiamiento de turismo, no se ha proporcionado ninguna evidencia real empírica de cómo va a mejorar la entrega de servicios para nuestra comunidad. Turismo es un generador de ingresos, un creador de trabajos, mejora la calidad de la vida aquí y nada que nos fue presentado en las recomendaciones y propuestas en las submisiones presupuestales dijo nada sobre cómo esos propuestas mejorarían la comunidad, beneficiarían a la comunidad. Creo que debería ser mirado, no es solo un problema presupuestal. Necesitamos ver cómo esos fondos son gastados y cómo se beneficiará de ello. Y cualquier decisión de cambiar radicalmente la estructura gubernamental, la estructura de la ciudad, que entregue servicios a la comunidad, debe ser thoroughly evaluada y discutida con los electos antes de que se anuncie. Y eso no parecía suceder. Parecía más como que las decisiones ya habían sido tomadas, los ciudadanos se habían detenido, sorprendidos y todos los conflictos que se obtienen esta noche son un resultado de eso. Se podría haber evitado por diálogo abierto y transparencia y eso construiría más confianza en el gobierno local que lo que tenemos ahora. Gracias.
¿Hay alguien más que quisiera hablar esta noche? No vamos a pasar un par de minutos más de esto porque ya hemos pasado una hora y media y creo que hemos oído lo mismo una y otra vez. Así que si hay alguien que quiera decir, entonces déjalo hablar, de lo contrario, repetiré lo mismo que ya hemos oído. ¿Alguien que quiera hablar? Paul, ese es el señor, yo he hablado primero.
Tim Rambidge, 6079, Stonewall, Jackson Highway. Cuando vivía en la ciudad, solía hablar aquí, en otro lugar, durante el curso de muchos consejos. Y la primera cosa que me gustaría hacer, trataré de hacerlo sin mencionar ningún nombre, me gustaría atraer la atención al señor que está sentado en mi izquierda. Me gustaría comdarle por entrar en la línea entonces y un encuentro improvisto en el río Brubry de Front Royal. Literalmente entró en una línea y su único asistente o única persona a su lado fue el director de IT aquí para Front Royal, Virginia. Tomó cada pregunta que podía y trató de responderlo a lo mejor de su capacidad. Eso dicho, me ha hecho sentir un poco dudoso, ¿de acuerdo? Algunos años atrás, hice el comentario sobre Benjamin Franklin, que fue el que llegó a las convenciones constitucionales y todo ese tipo de cosas que nos dieron nuestra maravillosa Constitución de Estados Unidos. Me mencionaré eso un poco más adelante también. Él mantiene en la parte de la espalda del brazo de Washington. El brazo de Washington tenía un par de rayas brillando y se recordaba pensando a sí mismo, ¿estamos entrando en el sol冉升, o estamos entrando en el sol setting? Bueno, tengo que preguntar un poco porque en los últimos años he experimentado una gran revivencia de Main Street y romper el corazón de nuestro departamento de turismo. Es un poco desahuciantes y me siento un poco dudoso porque siento como si hubiera hecho una turnada inmediata y en vez de eso, comenzó a avanzar hacia el sol setting. Y eso para mí no es algo bueno porque eso significa que posiblemente Front Royal, la distorsionada calle de la ciudad de Main Street, ahora está avanzando hacia su noche, o años, o lo que sea que el caso sea. Así que desgraciadamente, eso es mi opinión. Ahora, mencioné ir de vuelta a la Constitución por este momento que me gustaría hacer. Esa es mi opinión y probablemente más otra opinión de otras personas en esta sala. Y terminaré con esta simple declaración. Creo que la Constitución de los Estados Unidos trae las reglas de Roberts a la orden. Gracias, y un placer.
Paul, ¿puedes parar?
Puedo hacerlo. Primero, me gustaría decir que es muy conveniente llamar la regla donde nadie puede decir nada a nadie en la noche que hay tantas personas aquí, tantas personas que están enojadas con ustedes todos, enojadas con el administrador y de repente estamos calmados y supuestamente debemos sentarnos aquí y actuar como si ustedes todos fueran los alternativos. Alguien acaba de venir y dijo que el señor Teager nunca dijo nada sobre la Comisión de Comercio. En uno de los artículos de Roger Dean Cheney, "Turismo, el centro de visitas, futuros de personalización y desplegación, ¿qué sostiene el presente futuro?" Teager mencionó que no propone salarios de personalidad para el turismo en su propuesta presupuestal para el año fiscal próximo. Como departamento, ha recomendado que sea desplegado al sector privado, aparentemente al menos inicialmente la Comisión local de Comercio. Así que cuando dice que no lo hizo, ahí está.
Uno más, ¿hay algún?
Hello, Ben Riner, 233, Virginia Avenue. Solo quería venir aquí, no tenía intención de hablar hoy. Solo quería venir aquí y decirle gracias, en realidad, por levantar las reglas de Roberts. Ustedes todos se sienten aquí, siendo criticados durante una hora y media con poca apoyo. No estoy diciendo que todo lo que ustedes deciden es perfectamente, ya sabes, cierto y la mejor forma de ir, pero creo que ustedes tienen nuestros mejores intereses en mente. Somos personas muy capaces y espero que ustedes tomen todo lo que estos buenos han dicho en consideración y tomen la decisión desde allí. En el meantime, solo quiero decir que sé a cientos de personas en el condado y sé que ellos apoyan a usted en su toma de decisiones y que no todos están aquí hoy, pero quiero ser parte de su voz. Gracias.
Gracias. Uno más.
Obviamente, tampoco voy a terminar la charla esta noche, pero quiero decir una cosa que quiero preguntar. Cuando sé en Internet, en TripAdvisor, en Google, no hay reviews. Si buscas Front Royal, ciudad, ciudad de Front Royal, lo que sea, no hay reviews, no hay fotos, no hay enlaces, nada. No sé si el centro de visitas, si promueven darnos reviews y si tenían un buen tiempo aquí, pero así es como atraen a la gente, eso es solo una forma. Y creo que necesita que haya creatividad. Sí, de acuerdo, los cambios siempre están sucediendo en la vida, en el mundo y necesitamos una nueva creatividad, nuevas ideas, nueva talento. Creo eso. Y la otra cosa es que Matt Teager es muy bien respetado en esta comunidad y recientemente he oído a mucha gente hablar de él y la gente estaba pidiéndole que fuera al alcalde, ¿de acuerdo? Y no voy a sentarme aquí y escuchar a la gente ser despreciable. Y eso es todo, agradecimiento.
Si todos están seguros, que estén bien, que estamos contentos de tenerlos aquí esta noche. Si quieren irse y tomar un par de minutos, no, 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 uno más. Esta noche, cuando lleguemos a nuestro presupuesto, tendremos una reunión pública en nuestro presupuesto dos veces. Así que alguien que quiera volver cuando eso llegue a la reunión pública estará bienvenida para hablar sobre cualquier tema que se refiere al presupuesto. Eso no va a suceder probablemente durante otro mes, mes y medio, no estoy seguro de los fechas en este momento. Pero estará bienvenida para volver a cualquier momento y hablar de lo que tenga en la lista. Pero esta noche, vamos a cerrar esta reunión en lo que respecta a la publicidad. Así que gracias a todos.